Why don't we start, I'll call the meeting to order. The first order of business. The first order of business that I want to announce is that, I believe it was last week that Dottie Grover passed away. She was a longtime resident of Weathersfield. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. She was a member of this board. She was instrumental on moving the salmon-covered bridge and supporting, of course, the West Weathersfield Fire Department, where her husband was chief for so, so many years. So if we could do that, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. I know I called the office and I've got flowers going down there, I think. So at her daughter's house. We opened tonight's meeting with a continuation of a hearing that was scheduled and held on some zoning bylaw changes. So why don't I leave that up to you, Brandon, or Chris Witten, or the Chair of the Planning Commissions here, Howard Beach. So why don't you guys take it over?
I'm gonna let Chris take it over from here. He's prepared a memorandum, which is in your packet.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep, we've got you, Chris. Go ahead.
Awesome. Yeah, so yeah, this is a continuation of what we talked about last time, our last meeting. And this is some prenup stuff from the planning commission side. Had been dropped a couple of years ago, so we're just have basically just doing some housekeeping with these bylaw changes.
Are there any questions on the information that's in the packet? I'll start there. Are there any questions either from the board or the public? Or if you are, can everybody online hear me okay? I see there's a few people on. Of course, I just talked to Chris. But everybody, do we have visuals or no, Olivia? So I don't know how we can test that out. Rosalie, can you hear me? I think you probably have to unmute.
Yep, I can hear ya.
Okay, great. Thanks.
You're welcome.
The only question I had, as I remember from the last meeting was, and I didn't see it enclosed in our packet, was my question in my mind was about the square footage of a building, a pre-existing building that was so many square feet. And then the answer that was given to me was that you could use that building of that size. It would have to be contained to no more than 800 square foot. But I didn't see that in the packet here. So has anything changed in that? Or has the words in the change been left the same? How, does anybody know that, Chris, or Howard? I'll ask that to you.
It did not come up at the last meeting for specific wording. What we could put in its place was just occupies a maximum area of 800 square feet, regardless of the overall building size, just to make it clear that it's...
Is that noted in our, maybe I missed it. Is that noted here on tonight's?
That is not.
Oh, okay. But you did say there was some kind of inference. What, and it was just me. I don't know whether the rest of the board members are on with that or not. I would feel comfortable with clarifying the language for the zoning administrator. That's all. Paul?
Which one was that? Which bylaw?
I didn't see it here in tonight's packet. It was...
So it's not part of this hearing, that bylaw?
Yeah, it was.
It was?
Well, this is a continuation of that.
No, no, I understand that. What I'm wondering is the question that you have, which bylaw change does it pertain to in this packet?
I didn't see it in this packet.
Okay, so is it a bylaw that's getting changed right now?
No, it's not.
Oh, so it got dropped out of the hearing?
It didn't get dropped out. It wasn't part of the hearing. It never was. Not the one you had.
But we warned it two weeks ago.
I understand that. Chris, can you clarify that, or do you want me to?
Under the shot, so the item that we were discussing last time wasn't open for debate as far as, you know, as one of the proposed bylaws. It was in there as an excerpt from the proposal. We just took the language out of the proposal and put it in tonight's packet, that is actually open for hearing. So we started talking about it last time, and it was never warned or any...
Right, because it was previously from before. It was a mistake in the packet, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So that information that was in the packet should not have been in the packet the last meeting, and it wasn't part of the original warning of what bylaws are being changed, correct?
Right.
So it's not on the table, then the 800 square foot, that particular bylaw is not going to be adopted tonight if we choose?
Chris?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's still on the table for consideration, then, I guess, right? I just want to be clear about where it sits. I did not see it here. But boy, a continuation of a hearing. We already opened it with it in it. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that who gets to pick now whether or not it's not continued.
So what you need, if I may, what I think you need to do is take a look at what the warning was. And look in on the warning, what bylaws were affected. And then look at the packet. Just because some information's in the packet, I don't know the legality of that. The information was not supposed to be in that packet because it was not, the information was not pertaining to a bylaw that was under the hearing for that particular night. Even though you guys started discussing it, it wasn't part of the warrant hearing. But the information was in the packet. So the warning, as you know, gets posted and it's got a list of stuff. Somehow that information got put into the packet for us to look at. But that's not what was warned. So legality, I don't know that, but I'm just saying.
So we're not going to adopt that one, then. I just want to be clear. And for the record, I want that enrolled in the minutes. Then whatever it was, I don't know because I don't have it in front of me for this particular... It was associated with a number and a listing. I don't know what it was. It was under buildings, I think. Because tonight's, you can read item number two. It says, "Public hearing continued from 3:15 to 21." There really isn't any specific definition of what we're going to talk about in regard to the zoning. It just is a continuation from the last meeting.
It's a continuation of the bylaws that were warned to be discussed. And that was not a bylaw that was warned to be discussed.
Okay. Is that, I just want to make it tighter language in that. Everybody know where I was going with the bill? For everybody in the room here, I just want to discuss what that was, to stop the confusion.
But what I recommend, if I may, is let's maybe put that on agenda just so we can, we could discuss it. If we find that we need to do something, we can warn for that particular bylaw. I don't want to forget it either. I don't want to lose that. And I don't think Howard or Chris does. So I'm just saying it wasn't on that warrant. But let's continue to, we'll talk about that. And then if we decide we need to change something, we can warn that particular one specifically. How's that? Is that...
Yep, that's fine. So just to recap, though, the planning board has worked hard at looking around in the town and seeing, as in any other town, there are some buildings that exist. They're trying to allow, and they've passed some language, and we have passed it here at the table, to allow small businesses to start happening. In those, instead of constructing new things, to allow some of this stuff to happen. There was some talk about a maximum of 800 square feet. So if you envision that as a 20 by 40 inside of a building. My question, which a couple of weeks ago was, well, suppose it's a much bigger building than that. What happens? And the answer was, well, the person would only be able to use 800 square feet for that purpose. But I think reality, in my gut, says that if that business evolves and thrives, including myself, I'd be guilty of pushing the envelope. So I just wanted some language in there to say, okay, suppose a building is 1,200 square feet and the business thrives, what then? And how does it work on traffic and lighting and all kinds of other things that may evolve out of that? But I just got clarification from Paul on that. So that's up for a different day, for discussion.
Let's circle back around with that. We'll pull that. And I don't want to speak for the Chair by any means. But I think what we'll do is we'll look at that at the next meeting, the planning commission meeting, and bring something to you guys just to say where we're at so we can have a discussion on it. It won't be a hearing, but we'll just have a discussion maybe. And then we can make sure where everybody's at. If we need to change something, then we'd have to warn a hearing for it. We might be okay the way it's worded. Let's just bring that in so we can see it.
It might be, yep. So are there any questions, setting that aside? There were other issues dealing, I think, with, well, there's some of them here in our packets. Renewable energy. I think I saw some with regard to, well, there's some deer wintering. There's some work here in conservation. I always thought, because I've had significant experience dealing with stream water and so forth. There's a really lot of restrictions by the state of Vermont and at the NRCS level, which is the federal level, dealing with water and setbacks and everything. But you can read these for small renewable systems, large systems. We do have two that are going in place. One was approved to go into the old Burnet Morrow Farm and another one here with the town at the highway garage. Those are both going to be close to five acre sites. Are there any other questions on the proposed zoning bylaw changes, then? Because this hearing tonight, we have two choices. I can either close the hearing, hearing, no other comments, and we can adopt the changes as noted through the planning board, or we can continue it if somebody else wants to comment on it. We can continue the hearing. What does the board want to do? If the board, I would like to know what the board feels, whether or not they've got sufficient time enough to close the hearing. Then I'll either, we'll vote to close the hearing, or I can do it by myself. And then I would ask for a motion to adopt these changes as noted.
I had a chance to look everything over, and it looks all right to me.
Okay. Kelly, you're okay?
It's all right for me.
Paul, you're okay?
Yeah, thank you.
So then I'm going to close the hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw changes and note the date of April 5th, 2021. So now I'd like to hear a motion from a board member to adopt the changes as noted.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion been made and seconded to approve the zoning bylaw changes as noted in the minutes of April 5th, 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Let's take up the minutes of March 15th.
Make a motion to approve minutes of March 15th?
Need a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2021. Is there any discussion? We're having a little, we seem to be having an issue, but I was in the office to see Brandon about the posting of the minutes. And it did get, for the record, it did get posted on one of our icons, but then automatically did not get transferred to one of our other ones. I think he has corrected that in the website, but it's been kind of a headache where they have been posted, excuse me, and it just didn't move automatically. But I think that's been corrected. Is that...
It has, and we, every time we post minutes from this point forward, we're going to verify it across the board, just to make sure they're everywhere.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2021. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move on to fire departments. I know that they have, just a second, John. I know that they have a fire, a significant fire. I don't know if both of them are there, but I know they're out working. So I'm not sure what the board would like to do, given that fact.
I'd recommend that we move it to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I've spoken to both fire chiefs. They'll be here. They're wrapping up. They probably need about 45 more minutes, and that was about 15 minutes ago. The vice president's here from the Scotty Volunteer Fire Department. And we're just waiting on Josh.
Well, let's move, then, and then when things happen, we'll go on to talk about other things. And so we won't dismiss that. Let's go to your report, Brandon, if you can.
I can't interrupt. You skipped over comments. I'm not on the agenda, so...
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. That's exactly right. I crossed that out.
I don't know. I'm asking you to come in.
Yes, I'm sorry. I missed all that.
Not that I don't enjoy...
No, 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 and I missed it for the public and any of the board or whatever else. No, I went to Dottie Grover and I lost my mind. So we're going to backtrack, though. We're going to go to comments from citizens. And you're right, John. I didn't ask him to come in. And, well, he offered to come in, but I asked him if he could possibly give us an update on what's going on in the world of Montpelier. It's, there's a lot of unknown, and any information that he can give us is really helpful. So I'll give the floor to John.
Thank you. I think as most of you know, I got assigned to the education committee, and that's been kind of my strong point. There's a lot of other activity going on that it's a little bit of a challenge to keep track, exact track, what's going on. There's 430 bills that have been entered into the House of Representatives. And what happens is a few of them get picked up in their priority schedule. An awful lot of them don't even get looked at. Right now, like, the education committee has forwarded past three bills. And then they go to the Senate. The Senate does something to them. Then they come back to the House. It's really a convoluted process. But of interest to the town, a bill that passed the House a week before last was what we call the big bill. And it's sort of like the town budget, but with a lot more zeros. And of interest to the town was a section on state aid to highway. And I could tell you that all levels were funded at the same level as last year. There's almost, these are all round numbers. Almost 15 million in bridges that the town can access, although that takes a long time. There's 15.3 in class two roads. There's another 12.6 in what they call structures. The one that you're probably the most interested in is state aid to highway, which we always plug in a number, and I think we increased it a little bit. That's level funded, so we're probably off by a few thousand dollars in the negative direction when the money actually comes in. Another number of note is there's 1.15 million in what's called disaster non-federal. What can happen is every summer, fund a store beside the park somewhere, it caused significant damage in a very isolated area. And it's money that the town can access for an isolated event that won't trigger a FEMA event. There's also 6.1 million in mitigation money that the town can apply for. But of course, you've got to keep in mind that's 200 and something other towns applying for the same amount of money. I can't say definitively, I forwarded it to Brandon, that there's a couple of big plots of money from the federal government. One's called ARPA, which is what the town will be seeing money coming in from. And the other one is what's called ESSER, which is the ones that the schools are getting access to. And according to what the numbers we saw, that the ARPA money that'll land in the town of Weathersfield is like $600,000. It's just south of that. I wouldn't go spending it until you know where it is. It's going to be probably some substantial criteria that you can spend it on and can't spend it on. But the way I understand it, that particular plot, they want to get the money into the economy as fast as they can to stimulate the economy. So it's not going to, the school funding, which is absolutely astonishing numbers. I can give you an example. Windsor-Southeast, which Harkland, Windsor, West Windsor, and us, by the time they're done, it's going to receive almost $14 million, some of which is going directly to the schools. The schools already received $300,000 for what they call ESSER 1. They haven't got ESSER 2, and ESSER 3 are bigger than 2 and 1 put together. The biggest, in my view, the biggest problem with the school funding is that most of it indeed has to be used for accelerating, or to bring the kids back up to the level they were before the COVID event. So they definitely, this one definitely has to have some relation to COVID. And most of that will involve people. And how do you spend, how does Windsor-Southeast spend $14 million hiring people when everybody's competing for the same talent pool? Nobody's been able to answer that. I know they plan on having a very robust summer program if they can staff it. Another item that's of particular interest to the town, I think the town really needs to get on track with this, is the broadband build-out. You may see in the papers, there's an acronym CUD, CUD, community, excuse me, Communication Union Districts. And I forwarded the map to Brandon and Dave showing all the districts there in Vermont. There's one slot in southern Vermont that is not part of a district. Weathersfield, Cavendish, Ludlow. Springfield isn't either, but Springfield's got VTEL. They've built out Fiber, the last mile by the, so they have no desire to be in one of these districts. The biggest district that butts us to the north is EC Fiber. And there is a ton of federal and state money coming to these districts. That doesn't mean that we couldn't access it by ourselves, but we'd be in a lot better position if we were a member of that district. And I really think it would behoove the town to get on track and move quickly as you can because the goal is to get this money out on the road and being worked on as early as possible. I've seen it at the federal and state level. The goal isn't just to hit the hotspot. The goal is to get to every last house within the towns. Weathersfield is a little bit, probably quite unique for Vermont. I mean, we have three phone companies. They have Comcast. Some of the people are on VTEL, so they care. The ones that are on Consolidated could use improving. TDS definitely could use improving. I think if we communicate with Cavendish and Ludlow, which also are on TDS, I think we could probably maybe join EC Fiber District as a group. But I think if you don't move on this stuff and be in a position to accept the money, the train's going to leave the station, and you're not going to be on it. Other than that, there's no big legislation coming up that I've seen. I don't know all the bills that are coming over from the Senate. But there's no big earth-shattering ones that will affect the town, although Floanne, we question that. If there is a bill to make mail-in voting the norm, that, I haven't seen the bill yet. Mixed feelings. I mean, it does, it does increase voter participation, but it's an enormous waste of resources, especially on like town meeting. When the, how many are on the checklist now?
2,400.
2,400, and we get less than 500 back.
But are they proposing automatic meals to everyone, all voters? That's ridiculous.
That's what the move is. I don't know if that would just be general election or all elections.
I would assume it would be general, but still, hopefully, they're going to pick up the bill.
That would be nice, wouldn't it? Well, from what I've heard, unfunded mandates don't go very far. There's a, right now, there's a bill to have free breakfast and lunch for everybody, but there's no funds for it. So the school district's got to pick it up. Needless to say, there's quite a bit of opposition. There's a bill, this doesn't really affect the town, but to increase the bottle deposits to 10 cents and expand it to wine, water bottles, Gatorade, an awful lot of other products would join the group if that passes. And I'd say that's probably going to pass. But like I said, other than that, there isn't a lot going on that would directly affect the town socially or politically. Thank you.
Are there any questions for John? I know when you brought up the voter, I saw Floanne shaking no as much time as I've ever seen her, been here for 40, 50 years. So I recommend that you reach out to Cavendish as well because, you know, if we have reservations about that, we'd certainly like to have it shared to you so that you know how to vote. I've heard that that bill, a little bit about it, was to make it permanent. And that would, I don't think they specified it to just a general election. I thought they meant like everyone, just the ballots were going out.
Well, I was concerned because we've been getting a lot of surveys about how we handle this and how things were. And I was just told that these things...
I firmly know how to get, I firmly know how to get people to vote. Controversy. And apparently, there's not enough taxes to be raised or money. It's got to do with, everybody's life has to do with money. And we haven't seen that level of voters just come in and have a big bang no. We haven't, it hasn't happened. So when you look around, and I have, to surrounding towns about what they have or don't have, Weathersfield is in a group that is reasonable on its taxes compared to others. So I don't know where everybody wants to pick to live, but, you know, that's the bottom line. Usually, there's an issue that makes people have interest and come out to vote. I don't know what that interest is, but that's what happens. But to force somebody or just shove them out there, I, the thing that bothers me the most, I think, and I know, I've sat in this room to try to purge the checklist before, and when somebody in the room just doesn't know if that person's still here, they get left on. You can't take persons off that are on the checklist. So when those ballots go out, if somebody happened to say, well, if Fred Jones, and I'll just use that name for example. I don't mean to pick on Fred. But if somebody happened to get into that ballot and sign the name, there's no check. When I've come through that door a million times to vote, they don't check signatures. They don't have any way of knowing who that is. It's just automatically taken. So I don't know the answer, but I just don't agree with like putting all the ballots, the whole checklist out.
Well, I think Vermont should actually go to some kind of an identification for voting. You know, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but they are really...
But if that's up for discussion to pass on to our representatives, then that's what we want to do. Paul?
I was just going to ask, John, maybe, you know, just because I'm new, but the, well, not new, but new to the internet stuff, how do we get on board? You said that we don't want to miss the train. We don't want to do this. So what is it that we have to do as a town?
I reached out to Brandon, and everybody on, I don't have the answer to that. I think the first thing to do is talk to EC Fiber, because that is the one to our north. They're in West Windsor and Windsor. They haven't built out there yet, but they're going to be probably this summer. I know that sounds like a company name, and in a sense it is, but they're the ones that have strung Fiber through all, well, above Barnard, way up into, I think, up into Corrent. They're the biggest CUD in Vermont right now. But I was really surprised when I saw the map. And we were the pocket that visit one of these, in one of these districts. Even the northeast kingdoms got one, except for a couple of little, really tiny towns. Four people living there.
So we actually have regional planning on tonight to discuss that, to discuss broadband improvements.
I would remind, and I'm pretty close to Vermont Telephone. My daughter is like the top of the food chain in sales. They are building right now Fiber to Girdlot and Wellwood, right now. So I would be open to any company.
I agree.
And we'd be careful about picking. The only thing I know about all of this is, and I've known it for years, is licensing. You know, there's a reason why TDS is on my road is because they hold FCC licenses to that. So no matter what we think about building Fiber or whatever, I know when Carl Wannan built his house up, they have, I think they have Comcast in the campground. It was going to cost him like $20,000 or $40,000 to build from the campground to Carl's house. So there's a sense of licensing and other issues here. So they do control themselves. It's a lot like the milk companies, a monopoly. They do buy these, and so they don't work with each other kind of either. So I would suggest that we reach out to all the companies if we're going to do that.
I, I don't disagree with that at all. VTEL has a pretty good track record, I mean, I can't, I'm really, they should be very proud of themselves that they, the way they did it, and they, they've had fiber to their house now for five or six years. Way ahead, Springfield's got the highest speed internet in the country.
The, the only thing that I would be, I went to one seminar at VTC years ago, and, but everything has evolved so fast, you know, I tease and kid people that we're in the age of Star Trek, where we watch our young people, and they push all these buttons and they're just, you know, whatever, so. The one thing that I think, that was the conversation up there, was the reason why fiber was thought to be more of a benefit other than wireless, was the lapse in connection. So, I mean, I listened to doctors and everything that were having a, a stat come over their computer, and all of a sudden, the wireless lost its signal for a moment, which screwed everything up, but the fiber is much more of a consistent source.
Until a tree, until a car hits the wall.
Yeah, and that, I was gonna say, until, until wireless somehow with their satellite positioning evolves to make that connection absolute.
I, I don't know this for a fact, but, but one of the problems with wireless, the goal with fiber to the house is 100 gigs up and 100 gigs down, so you build, that's really, really fast. It, I don't know what it is here, but it, it's lightning speed, and I don't think wireless can accomplish that.
Yeah.
If they could, they wouldn't be stringing all the poles.
Yeah, that's another thing, though, when you think about it, so as wireless has evolved to the state that it has right now, it's pulling, it's pulling customers away from the fiber, and that, that means significant cost up to the remaining fiber people, same with GMP, so.
Or the remaining copper people.
Yes, yes.
And just because I mentioned EC Fiber, the way I understand the CUDs to work is, it doesn't mean that, that it won't be consolidated, or it won't be TDS. For all we know, TDS would be interested in doing the three towns.
Or something, yes.
Yeah.
But, so, we'll keep that up on our, I'm sure that Brandon will, through regional planning, I guess, it's a consideration, I know it's a hot top, been a hot topic for a number of years.
And, and we've also found in the last year especially, that if you don't have high-speed to your house, it affects your value, which affects the town's grand list. There's some houses that just block, won't sell, because they don't have good internet.
Is there any other, you're, you're okay with your report for now?
I, I.
But, but I'm gonna keep asking you to come in, because I know that as, as the thing gets closer to adjournment, that's when the bills pick up steam.
Yep.
Or die off.
Believe me.
Yeah.
So if it's helpful, this is Rob Fish, Department of Vermont Department of Public Service, I can help answer some of those basic questions about which companies can build out where or when, I know we're on the agenda later, but I just wanna put that out there now, if it's helpful.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna get to you later, but John is a member of the House Committee, and when he, when he offered whatever information that he had, that's how that whole conversation kind of evolved. Does that, why don't we, well, first let me finish this, are there any other comments from, from the board on topics not on the agenda? I wanna catch this back up. Paul, you're okay?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Brandon, was there anything, comment, was there anybody from the public that wanted to comment on something that was not on the agenda, or here in the room? Anybody at all, online, nothing? Okay, good. Why don't we continue that then, right now, since we can't get to the fire department anyway, so that if we have, what is it, I missed your name, Rob, is it?
Oh, he's muted.
We got you muted, somebody's gotta.
So Rachel Scudder is actually doing the presentation in conjunction with, with Rob.
Is it, does it, what does it take, a few minutes, or?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
They prepared a PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, they have, okay. Does anybody object to that? I mean, the kind of, the conversation kind of evolved right into it, so as long as it only takes, if it takes like five or minutes or something like that, or, I know that, this is gonna be ongoing, so why don't we just move to that? Who, so who's on now? Is it?
Hey, this is Tom Kennedy from Regional Planning.
Okay, go ahead.
So let me just do a little intro here first, before Rachel begins. The Regional Planning Commission got some, some funding to act as a facilitator as far as looking at areas where there's limited broadband access. So what we are trying to do tonight is just introduce to the towns what we found as far as through the mapping. We have, so we have with us tonight is Rachel Scudder, who's a planner in our office, we have Rob Fish, who's with the Vermont Department of Public Service, and then Scott Brooks is also here for, for TDS Telecom. Rachel will do the quick PowerPoint, and then Rob's gonna talk about, he can answer your questions, also talk about programs, both statewide and in federal, as far as what we're going on, so that, that's, that's my intro, so Rachel, I guess if you wanna do your PowerPoint, that'd be great.
Okay, yes, and so that was a great sort of beginning discussion to this presentation. Brandon, do you wanna go full screen on this?
He, he's already done it, so go ahead.
Okay, okay. Um, sorry, I'm in the middle of the leg. Um, so, yeah, this is just a presentation overview, we're just gonna go over the project, the different types of broadband, you had already sort of started a discussion about this, the current maps that we have, some of the funding opportunities, the definition of a Communication Union District, and sort of how to join it, and then a little bit about the legislature, which was already sort of talked about as well, so. Just going into the next slide, the project overview, this will be sort of a short timeline for what we're doing, but our goal is to find short-term solutions for people who have basically nothing in terms of broadband, who are considered underserved, and then also set some of the towns up for long-term solutions to broadband. So, we've contacted, and this was pointed out earlier as well, Baltimore, Cavendish, Ludlow, Weathersfield are all sort of in a pocket of space where they seem to have most need. So part of this too would be mapping underserved areas with less than excellent, which is considered 100 over 100, which is upload-download speeds, updating existing maps, crowdsourcing data potentially, and then more than I think facilitating a dialogue between potential broadband solutions with providers, you, the towns, and any other organizers who may be of service. And then aligning potential funding sources to make broadband or wireless internet improvements, and then also, a big sort of question is, how do you connect low-income households with funding opportunities and subsidize the cost of internet services as well? So moving over to the next slide, the types of broadband that there are. So there's, what's considered underserved is anything under four upload-download speeds, poor service, which is anything from four over one to 25 over three, which would be something like DSL. OK service, which is over 25, three, is, would be considered cable, but it's not symmetrical, meaning that the upload and download speeds don't connect, it's not the same level. And then excellent services, considered fiber, which is symmetrical. And Rob can probably explain this more, I forgot to pre-assess this, we are not telecommunications, telecommunications experts by any means. So, just moving on to this, this is the map that we made of Weathersfield, this information was actually provided by 2019 data source, so some of this might have already been either updated or dealt with. There's a lot of work that has been done in the last couple of years within broadband in Vermont, so this might be not entirely accurate, but a lot of the places where you see the red dots, which is sort of underserved or no service, those are areas that still typically are still having issues. And so, moving on to just the next slide, I just overlaid those dots with the FCC provider map, which is basically, you know, who is in charge of these areas. You see in the southeast corner, there's VTEL, which is providing what we can assume to be fiber, and then there's Consolidated Communications, TDS and Comcast, who are the main providers for some of these areas. I color-coded, just kind of generally, the red areas seem to be places where there seems to be more connection issues. Again, this is not the most up-to-date mapping that we have, and we've been told by Scott from TDS that they've done a lot of work in some of the towns in this area, and so that's something that is being worked on currently. And then, just the next map, this is just a map of, where you can see cable and fiber being built, this is another 2019 map, so this is something that might have been updated as well. And so you can see VTEL sort of creeping into Weathersfield, but mostly Weathersfield is surrounded by cable, which, if we're talking about what we said earlier, cable is better than DSL, but not as good of connection as something like fiber. And so moving into the funding opportunities, there are more, there are more opportunities than just this, but these are sort of the four main ones that are being pushed by sort of the state of Vermont public service site, so there's the cable line extensions, the CUD, or Communication Union District Preconstruction and Capacity Program, the Connectivity Initiative, and then the Broadband Subsidy Program. So the first one, the line extension program, it provides up to $3,000 in assistance to qualify, to qualifying eligible customers. Basically, it is like the end-of-the-line construction, places where cable companies typically don't wanna build out to, this sort of subsidize of that cost to them, where they, they might want to build. And so, the 2020 applications have already gone through, but they're expecting that they're going to extend these into 2021. So the CUD Preconstruction and Capacity Program, which is about $1.6 million, pays for consultant fees and administrative expenses, staff, and other recovery planning costs. A lot of what seems to be a big issue is the preconstruction costs of sort of planning these systems, and planning where the broadband is going to go. And then all of these costs must be related specifically to Communication Union District's response to COVID-19 pandemic, so there's a tie there, and it's only available to the members of Communication Union Districts or private partners, private service providers who are partnering with a CUD. And so this is, this program, or one like it, it might not be named this, might be available in upcoming months. So the third, the third program is the Connectivity Initiative, it's grants are awarded to internet service providers that agree to extend service to designated areas that are least likely to be served through private sectors or through federal programs. A new round of these grants will be appropriated this year, but they have not been announced yet. And with the new update in the legislation, they proposed that funded projects from this grant must be capable of at least that sort of excellent service of 100 over 100 symmetric old service instead of, it had, it had been at a lower threshold in previous years, so the state of Vermont really wants people to have the best type of internet. And so the fourth program is the Vermont Temporary Broadband Subsidy Program. It provides eligible Vermont households with a credit to assist with internet cost service subscriptions, and this is also tied to COVID-19, and so this is temporary, and they're currently not accepting applications, but this also is something that could be extended in 2021. And so outside of this program, in terms of subsidizing the cost of internet, individual providers sometimes have a sliding scale based on income, but there's no really long-term solutions in terms of that. So now we're gonna get into Communication Union District, all of this information was provided through the state's website, and so that's just where we got that information from, it's, so a CUD is a Communication Union District that allows two or more towns to bond together as a municipal entity for the means of building communication infrastructure together. It doesn't cost the taxpayers anything, or the town anything as well. So during COVID-19, they changed the rules for joining a CUD, so basically, basically a select board sort of votes to join, and as long as the, the CUD's electing board has sort of put them up for a vote. And so a CUD would be a more longer-term solution for broadband. And the next slide is what was sort of talked about earlier, all of that white space are all places that currently are not a part of a Communication Union District, so you can see EC Fiber to the north of us, and then we have Deerfield Valley CUD sort of to the And this is another source from the state website of why should we create a CUD, aggregate demand, mixing dense and less dense towns makes the project more attractive to providers, entire region can benefit rather than creating digital divide within town-by-town buildouts, funders are familiar with municipal districts, network design, construction, operation can be done more efficiently when planned altogether, and town boundaries become less important, boundaries and topography and settlement patterns become more important. Individual towns are not sort of on the hook for the costs, and there are also, especially now with the new types of funding, there are more funding opportunities, and it's easier to access federal and state grants when you're all lumped together as opposed to doing it on your own. And then, another thing is just lessons learned, resources can just be shared. And so now we're just gonna get into the legislature that has been passed by the House and is headed to the Senate. As it's written now, it's very CUD-focused, there's less opportunity for individual providers or individual towns to get funding through the state unless they're working with a CUD, and this is in most instances. The legislature wants to create a Vermont Community Broadband Authority, it would be responsible for coordinating, facilitating, supporting, and accelerating development and the implementation of universal community broadband solutions. It would also help coordinate with the CUDs for technical assistance of grants and loans, and then take over the administration, which is now being done by the Department of Public Services Connectivity Initiative. This, the second part of this is broadband loan and grant program. The second part of this is broadband loan and grant programs. It would help fund feasibility studies and potential broadband deployment for preconstruction costs, engineering and design and other expenses. And this is to the tune of about $9 million as it's written right now. Borrowing would be narrowed narrowed only to the CUDs and internet service providers working in conjunction with a CUD or municipality as a part of a plan to achieve universal broadband coverage. Property tax exemptions such as utility poles, lines, wires, and fixtures owned by the electric distribution utilities, at least by the CUD that has provided high-speed broadband service capable of at least 100 over 100 symmetrical broadband service. And the same property tax exemptions would provide be provided to non-CUD providers that construct broadband infrastructure in underserved and unserved areas as long as it's working with a CUD. And the appropriations, as it sits now, is about $150 million, 30 million of which would be to support the Community Broadband Preconstruction Grant Program. 120 would be to support construction grants and subordinate debt program. And then 100,000 would just go to the Department of Labor. And so now I'll leave that this up to questions and concerns unless Rob Fish, you have anything to add to that.
Just a minute, John, did you tell the House has passed that?
Yes, and it hasn't gone through the Senate. You can rest assured the Senate will take something, then it'll be back to my house again.
Well, the first question in my mind is, so what happens to the private companies that are serving us right now? That if they decide not to go along with this, they get kind of shoved out or opportunity because it says if you don't join, you won't get any money. And the second thing is, what would happen after this money is dispersed? Then I don't understand how it would be able to to operate unless it's a fee-based app. So after the build-out or after the alleged build-out, how would it be able to sustain itself?
I'm going to say a couple of things if either one of the presenters want to correct me, I welcome it. The way I understand it is that it does not shove out current providers. A lot of times this work is a partnership with current provider. You're absolutely right. I mean, you're, it's not going to be free internet. It or 100/100 internet. It's going to be fee-based, just like it is now. It's just that they feel the need and COVID has proven the need to get connectivity out to the last mile. And as long as you leave it to currently, the FCC made it thought that just leaving it in a free market would take care of it. Well, they aren't going to go out the last mile if there's only one customer out there. And that's what this is designed to mitigate.
Yeah, the state of Vermont basically wants so that wants it so that people have access to good broadband service. Even if they can't afford it as it is now, they will have access to that service.
So the purpose of a CUD is to make sure, just to ensure that there's universal service to every address, to get those customers that the market has left behind. In the case of 360, which it is going to be heard in the Senate this week, there are requirements in there of some type of partnership. Partnership is not defined between a CUD and a private partner. In the case of Weathersfield here, you have three different providers. You have VTAL, you have Consolidated, and you have TDS, serving different parts of your area. And the way it works with telephone companies, they in most cases traditionally do not build outside their region. So you have three possible. I guess what I'm saying is not one single one of these can cover your entire territory. That is something that a CUD could do in partnership with them and coordinating them. I know in the case of EC Fiber, they are very open to being the conduit to fund any of these providers if they commit to universal service. They've been open to the idea, and I'm sure they would welcome discussing it with you further. I did want to correct one thing with H360 and the CUD infrastructure funds and capacity funds. Those funds are not available yet. There will be some funds for preconstruction and capacity in H315. This is reallocating other COVID relief funds, and that is likely to be voted on in the House tomorrow, sent back to the Senate again. And we'll see how many times that goes back and forth.
Are you having the same conversation with either Cavendish and/or Ludlow?
Yes.
Then I'd recommend working with with regional planning to move the process along.
Well, you could do that, John, I suppose. You could ask questions, but this has opened up a few questions that I'm not even aware of. I'm hearing about these things for the first time. And now and now I'm learning that you voted to pass the House bill. I would have forwarded those questions to you prior to your vote. I see this as the state of Vermont that got federal funds. I don't think I don't think these companies that are serving us right now necessarily like government involvement. They're in business for themselves. And while I take someone's point that said they want to put it out to the last mile in a house in Weathersfield that's on the only road, and we don't care how much they pay or if they pay, somebody's going to care someday that that cost is going to be that's going to require a fee of some kind per month. Now, if you have one house out on a mile that I just heard, and and they're going to put fiber or whatever out to that mile, and then temporarily, we don't care if you pay, I think that day of reckoning is going to happen. Could be like $500 a month for some fee on one house. I get that. That's part of when I first started this off like half an hour ago about where Vermont has topography that has to be looked at. And that's why the evolution of wireless is still being brought forward where the cost of doing that kind of thing is not the same as build-out to fiber. That's that's the caution in the win statement for me because who would have thought 10 or 20 years ago, we'd be at where we are today? We seem to be complaining about what we have. My God, look at what we have. We have a lot.
We do, but if you're depending on it to make a living or for your students, worse yet, two or three students trying to do a classwork at the same time, then then it does not work like it should, like it could, not like it should, like it could. And I will say that if I was on the technology committee, I'd be a lot more abreast of what's going on with this. I'm not. I'm just bringing forward what information that I've garnished. And like I said, there's 430 bills sitting in the committee right now.
I don't need any lessons about teachers. My wife's in first grade, she knows all about what's going to just happen.
I know.
I know all about it. Are there any other questions for the presenter? We've got other people that are sitting here waiting to be taken up, and I kind of skipped over to this one. I know this will be ongoing. I just, I, for my own closing comment, it would be that that I don't feel necessarily supporting at this moment to bring in a whole other company. I would like to work with the companies that we have that are serving the town. They deserve first notice. They've been here, TDS has been here since I moved here in 1977. They deserve a chance at least to be heard, and I thought somebody was on from TDS anyway. I don't know what they offer. I don't know what their interest is. But but they, all of them should be involved in in listening and participation opportunity.
And we certainly encourage you to explore all of your options and get quotes and get data so you can make the best decision.
Any other questions or comments?
Scott Brooks is on from TDS.
If he if he wants to comment, now's the time.
Good afternoon or good evening, I guess. This is Scott Brooks of TDS, and just wanted to give everybody a quick notice that I'd be happy to come back. I know you're, we weren't planning on the schedule tonight, but I'd be happy to come back in person. I live in Hartford. I'm down. I've been involved with Ludlow, Cavendish, Perkinsville since 1995. So I've been with the company for 26 years, and I can kind of give you an update as to where, what we've done the last two, three, four years and where we're headed. So just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Or anybody who's doing anything, it doesn't, it's open season. Okay, with that, thank you so much for the presentation. I I want to move on. We've got, like I said, we've got other people here, and I'm sure this isn't the last we're going to hear of anything. So with broadband. Brandon, do you want to take up your report like before? Because I'm kind of skipping around here, I didn't mean to. I know that we have people sitting here for different things, I would think.
Dave, tonight, I'm going to just waive my report, but I'll remind everyone that it's located online if anybody wants to read it. There's some good information on there about COVID-19, some progress we're making on the Penny Tree Project, some of the things we'll be doing with fire department contract implementation, a dump truck update, and a really important transfer station update that I'd like to discuss at another select board meeting in the future. But other than that, I'll waive it tonight for the sake of moving on with the agenda.
Okay, good. Let's go then to, and if there are questions that surface, whatever the topics that you just did, then we'll take them up at that time. How's that or whatever? Let's go to the the trail agreement then, right? Number seven. Somewhere in our packet here is what did you, did you have somebody that was going to talk about this, Brandon, or how?
Yeah, I can I can go ahead and introduce them. So the Ascutney Trail Association has proposed a formal partnership with the town of Weathersfield through an agreement that describes the responsibility of the town and the responsibility of the ATA, basically to maintain, develop, and promote the wise use of non-motorized, multi-use trails, side trails and related facility facilities referred to as the ATA Trail System. There is the trail around the mountain concept that they're looking to finish up, and they're here tonight to present.
So do you have, who's going to do it? Do you have names? What's what's going to happen?
Yep, so I'm, my name is Stan Spencer. Lived in Weathersfield for 20 years and not anymore. But Eric Schutz, who is the president of ATA, and I'm the secretary. And Brandon asked us to come in today to not so much go over the plans for the for the town forest, but to actually talk about what the, you know, what questions there might be on the agreement outstanding, in particular to do with access through the state park, which is the agreement that we work with the state park to to achieve for the town of Weathersfield, so you do have access. Not through the Thresher roadside. So that is something that's still pending and is not imperative to this agreement.
Is there, has anybody from the board, have we, have you had a chance to look at this? I vaguely remember a presentation by former town manager Ed Morris where he had a, he kind of had a pamphlet that looked at this a lot. Is that the kind of thing that you guys have resourced?
So we have, so you're familiar with all the trails in West Windsor? The mountain bike trails, the ski trails, the high, the upper ski trails in the mountain. We just built, that's us, the Scutney Trails Association, the Weathersfield Trail, Brownsville Trail. Windsor Trail is also us. We we work with the state to maintain and manage those trails. So we are the, we make, ATA provides, it's the oldest trail recreational trail organization in the United States. And we we work with the state to make it so that they don't have to deal with individual towns. It's sort of like they deal with us. We're sort of the consistent partner in the room, and we deal with individual properties. So for instance, on the West Windsor Town Forest, for years now, we've been building out trails on that side. And the the frequency and traffic over there is significant as a result of that. We just built this, what's now the Norcross Trail from the Norcross Quarry from West Windsor all the way through Windsor, literally into the state park. And we are now at the Weathersfield Town Forest, which is the the next step sort of around the mountain, if you want to say that. And last spring, we were asked to go in and help clear. You had a massive blowdown incident in the town forest. So myself and several other people brought some heavy equipment in there and cleaned out your trails, the double-track road, logging road trails, so you guys can move around and find out what's actually in there and get access to it. And we've actually maintained that throughout the the rest of this year based on our acts, our approved access through the state park. So as a result, we also asked and we petitioned the state park to grant Weathersfield a license to allow maintenance vehicles and equipment to go through the state park to maintain the Weathersfield Town Forest. And they granted that, and I checked with the state and that they did issue that, and you guys have signed it and whatnot. And on that, they made a point today of just reminding me that while the agreement covers vehicle access for management, not hiking and biking, hiking and biking was approved by the state stewardship team and is considered to fall under the existing agreement between the Scutney Trails Association and Forest Parks and Recreation. So your public access comes through ATA into the town forest as far as hiking and biking and running around or whatever you're doing there. And as a result, you know, just like we have to do with any other of the properties, we have to follow the rules of that of the state and then again of whatever town and adjust accordingly.
Has the Trails Association reached out to Vermont Land Trust?
We are, we're very involved with the Upper Valley Land Trust, who is the holder of the
West Windsor Town Forest.
The easement, well, but
We did have a brief conversation saying that we would talk to him, but we can't talk to him unless we have an agreement signed with you. So he won't even talk to us.
But it doesn't, it doesn't matter what the agreement would be with West Windsor. It would be, and I don't know whether it's the Upper Valley or whether it's the Vermont Land Trust that holds the conservation easement.
It's the Upper Valley Land Trust here, and we have talked.
On the Fellows Estate? That's the town.
Yeah, we've talked to, I forgot his name.
Jason Barrard, we've talked to him, but he, we can't discuss the Weathersfield Town Forest with him until we have an agreement between the Scutney Trails Association and the town of Weathersfield.
Dave, if I may interrupt here, Heather Shan is the chair of the Conservation Commission. And then we've got some other Conservation Commission members here. Ryan Gumber is on our subcommittee for the town forest. So we have coffee. Are you concerned or have questions about what's allowed via the Upper Valley Land Trust?
Yeah, because
If there's anything that we can answer, let me know.
I did hear that early on, that wherever, what would be allowed and what is not allowed in regard to the land trust, whether they're motors, whether they're big fat tires for mountain bikes. I don't know the answer to the restrictions that the land trust holds or doesn't hold. I know that I've had some conversations with farmers that have those conservation easements, and they seem to bend when people change. So in other words, you have a new round of employees at land trusts who read the words and interpretations a little bit different than the last group that was in.
So we we have worked with, so the Upper Valley Land Trust holds the holds the rights on the town forest. And I worked, I actually talked to them. When I brought in our equipment to clear your woods, we went in and talked about that as to what trails to clear. And they were very much on board with that. And it's pretty straightforward as to how this works. And we work with the same organization in West Windsor, so it's the same people.
And I didn't know, I didn't know if the Upper Valley Land Trust or whether that's state property. They, in fact, they may have different rules there too. So I'm I'm less concerned with a cleanup, but more concerned with like a permanent use. And I'm not on, my property's not involved in land trusts, so I, but I've heard, I've heard different descriptions of them that things change. Generally speaking, they don't want motors because part of that conservation easement is to deal with wildlife and those kinds of activities. So I, all I asked was, had you been involved or you reached out to them? I find it a little odd that somebody would say, "Well, I can't talk to you because you haven't signed an agreement with the town," because immediately it would have gone over to somebody from the town and had that conversation about what's allowed or not allowed, but...
Well, not entirely, because we have, so we can't, we don't represent the town yet because we don't have an agreement with you. So, we can't speak for the town. So, when I asked permission to go in and do the work in there, it was basically because they knew ATA, they knew what we do, we work with them in other situations, so they knew what was going to happen. We can't represent the town until the town, you know, we, we can't apply for grants. That's the biggest issue, is actually, we can't even apply for a grant to build anything or to pay for what we've already done, because we actually have no right to do it, because we're not, we're just helping you out right now. So, the issue is, is just, the whole idea behind the agreement is actually authorizing us to, to acknowledge a partnership so that we can apply for grants to provide help.
Do you have a question?
Within the restrictions, it's laid out the allowed uses, and under one of those allowed uses is trails, and they detail what types of trails are allowed and that kind of thing. And then further down, under the public access, it talks about mountain bike trails specifically, and it suggests forming a partnership with a trails group to ensure that the trails are maintained to a standard. So, as far as allowed uses go, trails are one of the primary things that they include.
Just for a little bit of history, I mean, the Fellows Estate was a 300-acre parcel that was landlocked. The, it then was gifted, or they made arrangements with the Upper Valley Land Trust then, and I didn't know it was out of the land trust, to have the conservation easements secured. George Lamb represented the Fellows Estate, and then, and then there was a gift to the town. But there, there are other things that are on the deed, for instance. So, we call it the town forest, and, and you know, one thing that I've always had in my mind was to secure a place for the town to, if you wanted to plant a tree in a memory of someone, that you'd be able to do that. Sort of like a miniature maple grove of some kind, or something that would be significant. But, but in that deed as well is that any timber, and I don't know the extent of what's going on with, with, with the woods, but any of the proceeds that are ever, from, from that day forward, go down to the Edgar May Swimming Center for, for, for income. So, it's a little difficult, but that's an deed. And Brandon and I have talked about this, and at length, about different, when we get gifts, we need to watch what we're doing somewhat. So, I don't know what that will mean to a Trails Association in regard to logging or woods of that nature, because they have the call as far as timber goes, of what's going on. It was, it was extensively logged before the transfer, so...
So, this, so the state has, so we deal with logging contracts with the state. If you ever looked like across, on Route 44A, or across the street, they just went in there. So, all state logging contracts last two years. If they just, if the state decides to log the adjacent area, like the Futures Trail area, that would block our entrance, because they're going to be running the heavy skitters through, and that contract could be open for two years. But it's the same as me having current use on my property. It's just, it's remote.
But it's temporary, and you, you live with it and you move on.
Right.
Because probably, in some extent, any of the woodwork will help your trail.
Uh, well, it's just part of maintaining environment, right.
Yeah. Are there any questions for the, for this? I'm glad you opened the meeting and said that, that what we were talking about did not necessarily access Thrasher Road. We've got some, we've got some information last week. It's, it's, it's still not resolved with regard to the Thrasher Road, Thrasher Road entrance, and the board's going to take that up. Any comments from the board about this, Joey?
Do you have a rough idea of what a financial obligation from the town would be, like on a yearly basis?
Joey, it'd be, it'd be almost nothing.
Okay.
So, and I say almost, is, is you're a partner, right? So, we're, we've been around for a long time. Weathersfield's been around for a long time. It's a, so we have, it's all volunteers, so no one's getting really paid. We do have professional trail builders, and we try to apply for grants to pay for the trail builders, right? The people that come in and do a lot of the work that just no one else wants to do. So, it's all about grants, essentially. However, there is a trail, which we brought up before, one of the double logging roads that used to go through the property goes down near a stream. And in that case, as a former resident here, I would have loved to have a place to ski around a loop in the town forest. I've been there at least 50 times this winter doing the same thing. But that one stream is a, is a challenge, and that, and I'm a really good skier, and I have a hard time with that stream, getting across it and up the other side. So, if the town said, "Hey, we really love a wide bridge so that the Weathersfield School kids can go over there and have a loop, a safe loop, like a stumbobill bridge," that'd be great. So, if I, we can't get a grant for that, would the Weathersfield, town of Weathersfield want to help support that in some way? That's where the, any money would be. Not, or, or in a, as another example, if we needed to apply for a permit for something, we'd be applying as the town of, you know, it's, we don't own the land, you guys do. So, so whatever permit fee that might be, something that would be an expense, but essentially not much.
Well, when, and early on, when, I think when you said that, that, you know, you didn't have the authority to do it, all of these kinds of things, to me, go through the town manager's office.
Yes.
So, whatever ideas, either the Conservation Committee or the Trails Association, it doesn't really matter to me, it goes through the manager's office, because request for a grant, I'm not sure what. Activity, usually, it's just, it's just kind of a notice.
Right.
But that's not exclusive to this.
Right.
I mean, we're talking about the food shelf and other, way, you know, way other things as well. Goes through, funnels through the town manager's office.
Right. And so, I think that was what, if I can predict, but that's what Brandon was, was saying, is that we just wanted to make sure you guys understood that, I mean, that I know Joey personally, and I like a lot of things, so it's, uh, this, this is something we've done a lot of, very successfully, and the mountain is probably the key feature in several towns in this community and this area, so we really want to promote it and protect it and use it well. So, we're, that's what we're good at, and I think the idea behind this agreement is to make sure that it's authorized, that we can say we're a partner, so we can apply for grants to get funding to do things, to help out. That's, and then we can talk to Brandon or whoever the designated is to coordinate individual projects, but, but we can't really, we don't have the authority to ask for anything until we have an agreement.
Is there any other questions of this, or what does the board want to do with this? Do you want to take action on it tonight? Do you don't? I don't know what, so I'm ready to hear a motion. The motion would be to approve the, approve the Scotty Trails Association agreement as presented on, on April 5th, 2021. Brandon, you've seen all this, right?
Yes, I have.
You're okay with it?
I am.
Okay, good. Don't want to...
Joey, or do you want me?
Block you out.
Yeah, I'll, so moved, I'll make the motion that we approve the ATA agreement as stated in the packet.
Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Scotty Trails Association, which, as so noted in April 5th, 2021, the description in our minutes, noting that it comes and it works with West Windsor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to sign it tonight, Ward, come back in.
As a, as a...
Go ahead.
Quick note, do you need all the board to sign it, or just the representative?
I'm not sure how that works.
Aye.
We'll, we'll take that up at the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll work.
Yeah, I don't even know whether I sign it or whether everybody does. Number nine, vote to approve Bianchi fees. Is that, did I pronounce that right?
Yeah.
We had a little, yeah, we had a little thing in our packet from Chris. Are you still on? Chris Witten, are you still online?
Here.
Okay, take it away. It's yours.
So, this is what I had to make an office. I had a lot of calls from title companies and attorneys from out of town trying to get some information about any, like, different parcels that were being sold, about, you know, zoning violations or pending permits, things of that nature. And I know there's a lot of towns that, that charge for that, and I think it's appropriate that we start driving for it as well, because these are out of counters that are taking advantage of our services for free, basically. So, I requested the planning commission to approve a $40 fee, which is the same as a certificate of occupancy, for a resident. They approved it, and so I, yeah, just requested the board to approve that fee.
Did the board have a chance to read that? It's, you know, it's a request for information. They go in, you just heard Chris, they go in to ask for land use records, and, Floanne, go ahead.
Chris, are you talking about Bianchi?
Yes.
Regular Bianchi? The old Bianchi?
Bianchi.
We all, we put out, we put out messages years ago that we do not do Bianchi searches. Way back when. The law came in in 99, I believe, and...
97.
97, okay, well, got it, 99. But we, we do not want to be responsible for doing Bianchi searches, and they were told, "We do not do that." They have to hire an attorney to do it.
You mean landowners?
Yep.
Yep.
Anyone that wants that.
So, then, so then the landowner comes in the office or whatever, if they had need to gather information here, and then they charge the customer their hourly rate? And it doesn't have anything to do with the town?
However, they do that.
Well, it's like a title search, right?
Yeah, yeah, it would be a title search.
So, so, so what you're saying, so, so what you're saying is, Floanne, that, that people are, well, what Chris is saying is, people are coming into him, asking him to do the work, and you're saying that, well, that's what I'm just hearing.
I don't know about this, Chris. I think we should talk about it, because you're not, you're not a title searcher. Neither am I, and we don't take responsibility for title searchers. You're a title searcher in your other profession, not here.
Oh, right, 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 yeah.
No, no, I, I like Floanne's point, which is, we have someone coming in, asking the town to do more work when we're not really bound to do that work.
Why, if it's a Bianchi search? I mean, I get requests all day long for searches.
Well, but even if, but even if there's like a mortgage search or anything, I mean, or title search or deed and anything, we're not obligated to do all that for the people. I don't feel that way. I mean, that's what you have lawyers for, I suppose.
No, we do, I get calls every single day to do, not a title search, no, I would never do a title search, but to do searches on people's property for information to get out to them. And especially now, this past year with COVID, people can't come in and do it themselves. And so, I've told Chris that he and I have to work on this together to help people out, but not to take the responsibility on a Bianchi search.
Paul?
I just wanted to clarify with Chris. Chris, one of the, one of the things that basically the searches that you cover would be, anything in the Land Use Administration office, where they ask, "Is there any outstanding zoning violations or permit?" From that standpoint, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's the only thing I would verify. And then when I respond to them, too, I also say exactly what it is that I searched, so that way the town would be covered as far as liability. It'd be like, "Okay, I looked in the parcel folders, it wasn't in there on this date."
And that's, that's the other point I was going to... Right, and that's the other point I was going to, is that you're, when you do these, you indicate your role as a land use administrator, and you're looking solely at land use issues that could pertain to this property, and not doing a deed search, not doing a, that's not what you're, that's not what you're doing, and your, and your liability is only, is, is not there, because you're indicating what you've seen at the time. Is that, is that from a legal standpoint? Is that correct?
It's absolutely correct, right.
How many of these...
It was just a, it was just a resoning, and it sounded like I'm doing like a chain of, chain of title or anything like that. It would just be from that, and, yeah.
Your office capability.
How many of these, how many of these are you talking about a year, Chris?
A year? Oh, let's say probably 40, 50 a year, maybe? I mean, I probably get like two or three a week.
I'm, I'm asking for this to be put on the next agenda. I don't see the emergency, and I want clarification from...
No, I'd like to talk to Chris about it.
Yes.
I think we have, first of all, we have a wording difference here.
Yes.
Title search versus...
More than happy to grant some time. This isn't an emergency, and we'll just put it on to the next agenda, and then you can coordinate here. If you need to talk with Brandon, too, let's, let's do it that way. The board in agreement with that.
Yep.
Just, let's, there's, there's a few questions that will come up, and we need to offer time to resolve them. Is that okay, Chris? If it, if it's less work for you, that, that'd be great, so you just notify, what Floanne is, you know, I'm gathering, what she's saying is, we don't do those, so you're just going to notify the people that say, you say, "I'm sorry that the town doesn't, the town doesn't offer that service." That's all.
Okay. We might run a little issue with that, or our data information, those who go in, but that, I guess those would be conflicting in interest here. Should be interesting.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be...
Well, it's all public, so there's some stuff...
Yeah, we're not hiding anything. The office is available, either if it's by appointment, so I'm not sure that anybody can use COVID for, for that. It's not like we're shutting people out, so...
Well, I'm accepting all attorneys and title searchers anyway, so...
Right.
By appointment.
Is that, Brandon, we're going to kind of like put that off until Floanne has a chance to talk to Chris about it, or you, or whatever. I know you had to run upstairs.
Yes, that's fine.
All right. Okay, we're moving on. Let's go to...
All right.
Thank you. We're moving on to highway radios.
Can I just have one second?
Yep, go.
Before we move on. Darren will be here in just a minute, and then he's, he's going to sign the contract and leave. Josh will be here in about 10 minutes.
Okay. You got the countdown.
I'm just letting you know, because they're trying to put the fire trucks back in service, but he still wanted to get it done tonight.
Okay. Do you have a, let's go to highway. Do you have, we, this got, this motion got tabled, I don't know if it was last meeting or, I think so. There was a proposal to purchase, return to page, oh, mine says one of two, but it's not that. The, the... Uh-oh. Pickles, sir. To purchase highway radios, if you look here at our agreement, it was $5,000, or total cost of two years was $11,070. Do you need a timeout, Brandon, or what?
Yeah, just give me one second, sorry.
Thanks for coming up, Darren. Acres are burned, aren't they? It's like, I know, I saw a picture somewhere, like, where was it? Over near that horse farm? It's opposite of Cedar Hill, right? Across the river.
And further about a mile south of that, it just...
We had the canoe rental place, Pass Air.
Yes, exactly.
Pass Air, it's all the way down to, oh, boy, where that, they logged, way up on top of the hill up there. It's down on the right-hand side, going north on 12 there.
And it just kept blowing, right?
Yeah, just going every which direction, then.
Is it out now? I hope so.
They'll be back there all night tonight and probably tomorrow. Had to get everybody out because it was dark.
Well, that's what the fire's for.
Yeah, but you put the fire out, and you can't see it.
Okay, thanks. Well, you could start a fire to keep it warm. What do you think? Darren is in the middle of signing the fire contract right now. It's been worked on for, I'm not even sure how many months, months and months.
He's going to hang out until...
He's, he's...
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Yes, thank you.
That just took about, that took about 10 seconds, but, but I'm just going to reiterate that that took about a couple of years, kind of, to, for, in the making, to try to make some sense of things. And we, we will continue to support the fire departments, both of them. I've gotten quite involved in listening to their calls, and the reason he came in that way is because there's a pretty big fire in Cornish right now, and he's out, and nobody else seems to do what either one of them do. I would close with that comment. So, let's move to, and we thank them. I'll move back to the radios. We can read here on, Brandon's got the date on it for April 5th, but this is continuing. Brandon's got the date on it for April fifth, but this is continued. So, do you wanna take this, Brandon, or does Ray wanna take this? How do you wanna proceed?
Yeah, so uh, the highway superintendent, again, this, as Dave said, this is continued. Um, the highway superintendent in highway department is proposing um, digital radio system, which will provide more efficient communication for the highway per. Um, in the previous select board meeting, members had questions about the contract. Um, so the agenda item was tabled until additional information was obtained. Uh, the total cost for both years combined is eleven thousand and seventy. And that includes uh, the monthly rate of four hundred and twenty dollars, um, or five thousand and forty annually. Ninety-nine dollar per radio charge, it's a one-time installation charge of nine hundred and ninety dollars. Um, so for the total, for the first year, it's six thousand and thirty, and for the second year, it's five thousand and forty. Um, we do understand that this breaks the, the purchasing policy because we didn't take, we didn't put it out to bid. Um, there is, there is potential to do it for just one year as well. Um, we're, we're interested to see what the board wants to do.
That policy you didn't put in our packet, but, but it went out through an email to the board.
Yes.
So, so do you have a copy of that, or not?
Uh, do you want a paper copy, or do you want me to?
Well, no, I just think it, that it's a good idea to read the paragraphs, or whatever, because it, it, it does specify what that means and doesn't mean. Uh, for instance, uh, well, I'll let you read it, but I think it's paragraph B, or where, where it gets up to different dollar levels, uh, about what protocol is asked to complete.
So purchases of goods and services with a total price between two thousand and five thousand, that's the median category. There's another one between five hundred and one dollars and two thousand. Um, between two thousand and five thousand, require sign off on the purchase order by the department head, on the town manager, and/or the finance director. Um, the purchase order shall be supported by three written or verbal quotations, and the department head shall clearly indicate the recommended vendor.
Um, so stop right there for a moment, because I just wanna, I would just wanna see where that fits in this one-year fee. Because if I read this correctly, it's five thousand and forty dollars for one year, is that true? Or no, no, sorry, six thousand and thirty.
Yes.
Read the last sentence. Six thousand and thirty dollars. So, so you fit that into that, it, it fits into the, or does it move up to the C paragraph?
Yeah, it, it moves up. Um, so it moves into the third category, purchases of goods and services with a total price between five thousand one and ten thousand, require sign off of the purchase order by the department head, town manager, and finance director. Um, however, since we don't have a finance director anymore, it would just be the department head and the town manager, um, prior to the order placement. Um, the purchase order shall be supported by three written price quotations. And then, if it breaks ten thousand dollars, it needs to go out to the competitive bid process, unless the board decides to waive the pr, uh, policy. And the competitive bid process usually has a thirty-day turnaround. Um, so what we do is we'd advertise the RFP um, to the public, we'd put it on our website, we'd put it in the newspaper, um, and the Vermont bid website. And people send in sales proposals, and um, we do a public bid opening. At which point, we then write a, an analysis to the select board for review.
Let, let me just cut to the chase here.
Yeah.
If, if the uh, if the board wants to pick a, a single year, it's still, the, the requirement was to seek out three vendors and ask them to give us proposals. Even if it was for one year.
Correct.
For two years, it would require to go out into the whole world. But it's no different than us seeking uh, proposals for printing, for instance. Whether we go find a couple of printers, and, and it's a matter of business that we say, that we did our job, as, instead of a sole source to identify, okay, you get it, Dave, and we're just gonna hire you to do it. Um, so either way, the board would have to think about waiving the policy. My concern is, when Ray first came to me with this proposal, I'm not, I'm understanding the communication, I am, I'm getting it. But he wanted a way to, for the town to communicate with the fire and other sources as well. Not only just the highway. And as emergency management, I actually see that. So my, and which I haven't done, but my follow-up would have been, okay, it's not, it's, for me, it's not a question of whether or not we need the radios. It's about whether or not a radio exists. In fact, he posed the question to the guy that was there with them, because he immediately called me back and said, no, that, this system does not have the ability to talk to fire. The digital system can't do that. So my question would be, which I haven't had a chance to pose to Darren or Josh, how old is your radio system? And is there, because I also understand their uh, absolute reliance on communication. How old is your system, and will we be asked to buy new radios for you as well? And are we doing something here that we will look in another six months, if the fire stations happen to say that we wanna update ours, that we would then say, well, why didn't we know about it now? Because I don't know, in the radio world, is there a radio capable of doing what I just said? And I don't know the answer to that. So, Ray.
I, I talked to the gentleman about it, and I also talked to the fire chief about it, and the police.
Fire chief, what fire chief?
Sorry, I talked to Josh, I haven't had a chance to talk to Darren.
Thank you.
But the fire department has to be, by federal, has to be on their radio frequency. The police have to be on their radio frequency, and then we would be on our own. Um, unless we were on the fire frequency, that wouldn't work, because we'd be over talking. Every time there's an emergency, we wouldn't be able to talk on the radio, or shouldn't be talking on the radio for them. So right now, police and fire have two radios in their equipment to talk to each other. That's the only way they can do it by federal standards. So you can't get a radio that's gonna be fire, police, and us together. We would, the way to do this would be to, well, right now I have a portable radio, so if there is an emergency, I can talk to them. And um, there's portables available to give us, they could give you one, like we did the last time we had a, a storm flooding in. But if they wanted to put a second, a second radio in our truck, that has at least the fire, fire radio, we could do that. That would be the only way to really be able to fully talk to them.
We, Paul.
We, we kinda, we kinda talked about this, and Ray said the same thing last time, that if there's an event that, yeah, in general, if he's out plowing, he doesn't need to, to talk to them. It's not a, is this, is this isn't a twenty-four seven, they need to talk to them, it's when something happens. And Ray's indicated before that they go and get a radio, or they, the, the fire departments have a radio that they can, can give them. I would assume, in this amount of radios we've got here, are we, are we looking at any radios to, to extra, or is this?
It'd be ten radios for mobile vehicles, and then two portables, one for the spare truck and one for the spare loader. So if they're in there, that'll portable with them, but those portables can be used for traffic control.
We could, right, you could, you couldn't return, give those to the fire department too, if we needed to, at whatever time. So I mean, there are some, I mean, does the town have, uh, you know, do you have, how do, how do you communicate? You have to go get a radio, right? You don't have one with you, right?
Um, I go, no, well, I don't know, I don't think it's hooked up to the, to the town, but it's hooked up to both fire.
Yeah, we're on, we can't even be on the same frequency with the, with the emergency vehicles.
So, I, I don't know how that would work.
Well, there's two issues here. Number one, is the board satisfied with the policy? And I don't know enough about whether or not there's one available here, there's a company that could offer more for less money, or whether, in fact, this is the low bid, I have no way of knowing that. One company was picked, he comes in with his proposal, and that's it.
And I did research other companies that provide, it's almost like a cell phone service that they're providing with the radios. The only other company is in South Burlington, and they actually, these two companies kinda split right at Route Four. So they both, both charge the same, it's the same system, but they're charging, they kinda dilate their territory up.
I think, I think what Dave might be getting at, and, and, I mean, I'm all for getting radios for you guys and not waiting around, but also, I wanna follow what the policy says, so.
Right, that's why they have policy.
No, I know, and so.
So if that, so if that piece of information was available, I, you know, I would have liked to have seen that in the reasoning why, the, or the dollar number or whatever that was picked to do that. I, I don't know that, I'm just, the policy says what it says.
Yeah.
Breaking, breaking policy, not a good picture, and then you, it would require a board to vote to waive the policy. Um.
That's only meant for if you only have a single source. So if you have, you're buying a whatchamacallit, and you only have one vendor that sells it, then you guys can say, yeah, okay, we're not gonna do bids, because nobody else sells it.
Yeah.
That's what that's for.
How, how long would it take? It speaks to it, and, and, and this dollar threshold, as Brandon just went out to, so.
How, how long would it take to go and get some quote, get two more quotes from other people, even if they're?
I'd be able to get one more quote, I don't, I don't know anybody else, if there's nobody else around that sells the same product, so I can get at least one quote, I can call Burlington and see what they have to offer.
That's still, I mean, in theory, that's still only two, so I, I don't know how you, I don't know.
Well, I don't either, unless you call the towns or whatever, or do some homework, or call VLCT, or call somebody else who already has these, or, I, I don't know what, I don't know what. I know the policy's in place, I know uh, what the, what the, what this says, and I, I don't know.
You're limited by vendors.
Now, is that, so, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, man.
Uh, Ray Moore, our employee, grader operator, snow blower. Um, I understand the policy part of it. I'd just like to give my input as to the need for a radio system that works. Right now, we're using an antiquated system that, some days, I, I have to be looking at the truck before I can communicate with them. We, when I'm in the grader, I'm trying to coordinate five or six trucks all at the same time. If I can't talk to a truck that's two miles away, and I don't need him on this road, it doesn't do any good. If we're plowing snow in the winter time, somebody breaks down or gets stuck, you need to be able to communicate. Not, cell phones don't work on every road in this town. These radios that we tried, they do work on every road in town. We had them for two weeks, we had them in multiple pieces of equipment, we had the portables and different pieces of equipment. And they worked on every road in this town. And I, I just, the system that we've got right now is useless. Can't get parts for it, every day, somebody has trouble with their radios, and they're, hey, truck, my grader, I'm, I'm trying to work in there, and I listen to it screaming at me all day long, I'm stuck, so I shut it off because it's driving me crazy. I'm just giving you my input as a town employee, that we need a system, and anything that could be done to push it along would be greatly appreciated on my behalf.
Go ahead, Paul. So, just a quick question. That policy, what's the name of that policy?
Purchasing policy.
What are we gonna do with these? Rent them? We're not buying them. Purchase is buying, correct?
It is, but it's a service.
But, it's a, it's a dollar threshold. Uh, yeah, but it's a, we're talking about expending money. Um, Josh just came in.
We might wanna change the name of it then.
Just, we're in the middle of this, Josh, and I, and I don't know if you've got to leave or whatever, I know Darren just buzzed in and out. I don't know if you wanna sign that, or take a minute?
Is this it, right?
Yep, I don't know, Brandon will have to show you, I'm not sure.
What are you guys running for radio right now? Just like a CB, or?
Low band radios.
The board's gonna approve the contract too, because we had a couple of changes.
Police and fire using like high band?
Which of the changes that are gonna sign to you guys, but they still have to do those changes.
So if you wanted to use those, you'd have to get like your own channel.
Okay.
On a high band.
I said you.
Allowed to by federal law to use, even their.
I can comment on this.
Frequency, their, that whole channel bandwidth is all fire or all police. But you could get a similar radio to that, or you have to go to the digital too? We, we would have to get our, we can't, you can't get a radio that does police frequencies and fire frequencies, and then have our own frequency. Right, but you can have your own high-band frequency. We could get our own high-band radio, yes, and that, that would be co-bucks. Just the lease on the mountains between five and seven hundred dollars a month for the antenna space. Which is more than this lease. So really, you have a third idea of, a third option for pricing? We already, I already turned that in. Yeah. It was in this package. So he does have a third option, right?
But, but I haven't seen it. All this is news to me. Um, I mean, I, I've never seen another firm number other than what we have, for me.
The, the radio, to buy the radio, everything was in the package.
Yep, it was the last one.
Yeah, but this vendor, it, there wasn't another, there wasn't, there wasn't three sources of, of separate sources. It was just this one particular vendor. Did you have a, a person, Josh? First of all, first of all, I wanna, you know, Darren running and out of here because of the fire, I wanna thank you for signing that contract. I, you know, I, uh, it's been, you know, you guys run in and out of here in seconds, and you sign your name, but it's been like, uh, literally hours and hours of talking and meeting and working, and, and so I just wanted to thank you.
Um, so yeah, just on, comment on this system here. Uh, obviously, it's, as they're both saying, for them, it's been long overdue. Where, where they're running, they were running low band. I mean, for the fire, we, the fire service was on low band, and we got out of that just because of the service, and that was probably twenty-five years ago.
We, we already used all your radios up.
Then that's what happened, and they, they were taking hours to try to piecemeal stuff together, so, um, you know, it, it definitely, it definitely helps if they have a system where, where we can communicate, um, not on the fire, on our fire channel. Um, and it, it does work, they've, they've come, they've, you know, we, we had calls where they've come, uh, you know, and, and helped with driveways and so forth. Um, it, it just definitely helps with, with communicating, uh, with calls, or on the fire side, with the highway guys too.
Yours is high-band now?
It, it's, it's high-band, it's really narrow band, we've moved out of high-band to, and it's called narrow band. Uh, but it's still on the same, uh, so high-band is a wider threshold for frequency going across. Uh, our, for the fire service, has narrowed it down even more, so it's, it's very complicated, uh, definitely is. Um, but, I mean, what they're doing with that system, it honestly, they're, that system work, is working better than our fire ground that each, each department has a license for, our own fire ground to operate on scene. Uh, but there again, it's only limited to, so probably, once you start getting a mile and a half, two miles apart, we can't communicate even on our fire ground. Um, so I mean, if, if this system is, is working throughout the whole town, it definitely is, is well worth it. Um, CBC Pageant is the company, uh, that is who we use, uh, at our fire service, uh, our, our department, uh, for all of our radios. Um, and there, there is two, two other radio sources, as far as quotes and so forth. One, we've also used is R and R Communications, they're out of um, Keene area. Um, and then Burlington Communications, which is out of Burlington. Um, so just to kinda put in perspective of the cost, when we got our grant, probably five years ago for our radios, I had to federal, I had to go out and get three quotes. CBC Pageant, they were, that's who we went through, that's who we got our radios, because they were the, they were the, the ones that came, came in where we needed to be on price-wise, so.
And the, and the folks in Keene, R and R, they don't have a radio service? They can sell us radios if we wanna buy our own radios, but they don't offer this, this mobile plan, only Burlington and CBC.
Yes, CBC Pageant, they've, uh, they, they bought another radio vendor, which he's got it throughout the whole state, so they're a little bit larger than, than our R and R.
Dave.
Yes.
One other thing I'd like to add is that.
Thank you.
We, we need our own system for ourselves, not something that's passed into fire and police and everything else. Just to simplify things for us, you know, like, in my case, when I'm trying to coordinate five or six trucks, I'll save time sometimes, talk on the phone sometimes, save time. The less confusion. This system would be just basically our.
I know you, I really appreciate you, Dana.
I'm hearing that, but I'm also thinking out loud about the actual unit itself, and, and maybe, and I don't know that it exists, because I just learned something from Josh, where he, that he did say that there are three vendors, where it's simply a matter of channel changing. Where if you wanted to listen to fire, you could, but if you didn't, you'd go on to your own, through your own switch in your own machines. I don't know that that exists.
Have a separate radio, can't do it on the same radio.
Well, I don't know that, because I haven't talked to enough people to learn it, whether that's an option or not.
That's like a low band.
I don't know, I'm just saying that, I understand his thought, but I'm talking about the unit itself, I'm talking about.
The, the, the band that the fire is on is just for fire, there's no other channels that you can steal to give to a highway department. And the, the bands for police are just for police. It's so, it's so mandated, or so regulated, that the police have a radio, and they have to get a fire radio, and their crews are to be able to talk to the fire department. They can't steal a channel. It's not like the old low band where you could be on forty-five oh eight. It's not like the old low band where you could be on forty-five oh eight, I could be on forty-five oh six, I could just click a channel. They don't allow that anymore.
Did you have a question, Floane?
No, just waiting to sign this.
Oh, waiting to sign?
Floane has to do the last signature on the contract.
Of?
Everyone has to sign.
Fire department contract.
But they're signed now, aren't they?
No, I have to sign it, you have to sign it.
I'm sorry, as well, oh, what is, what is? What does the board wanna do with this? The radios? I know Mike's not here, I don't know what he thinks. Um, there's two issues, there's the policy issue, and then there's the, uh, the, you know, the radio unit itself.
I have no problem with them having the radios, and, and, and I understand what Ray's saying about, I, I don't think you're gonna find one that you're gonna be able to talk, listen, and do everything all at one. You can listen on anything you want, I can listen to fire and police, and I'll be able to listen to his on my cellphone with apps, but I'm not gonna be able to talk to him. That's, that's what they're getting at, is you're not gonna be able to communicate back and forth. That's what I feel, but I, I am, with what I've learned here, Ray, I'm sorry, I, it, it sounds like you could, you could present a couple more options, and then we would just check the, the box and say, our policy is done. If, if, if everything here, communication tonight was, uh, there's no other places, this is the only place, well then I might have been able to, but maybe just get a couple, even if they're outrageous, or they're not gonna work, I mean, honestly, I mean, I, I mean, let the people give their quote. One's gonna be radios with no tower, and we're gonna have to pay for a tower and put that price in, and, and whatever, and then, then we have the three quotes, then we can just say, here.
Just, just bear in mind, when you get together with that, that you've gotta read that purchasing policy, because over the ten thousand and one dollar threshold requires a paper, uh, uh, newspaper RFP.
Right.
Policies, there's, it breaks down.
I know.
In, in the dollar.
This one's not though, so, so if you get one in it that is, then you gotta turn it all around and go back and redo it all?
Between two thousand and whatever it was, read it again, you, the, the department heads just have to solicit the three people that they.
Yeah, between five.
Over ten thousand dollars, you have to go out to bid.
That's exactly right.
Right.
It says what it says.
One year, one year, six thousand dollars.
If we're gonna go through all that trouble, that sounds to me, I know what the policy says, but it sounds like we're asking a lot of people to waste a lot of time, including those at the company. If we know we're gonna go with this, why are we gonna beat it around the bush? This is what we're gonna do, or, or not, by the sounds, because from what I heard, was that the third option doesn't offer the service that we can get, but they will sell you the radio only. So are they really an option? Not really.
They're not here to defend themselves. I, I would respond by that, by saying that it is, that it is the burden of all the people that spend money in the town to know what the policies are. So, it, it came to us this way, this particular way, so, I mean, I don't like some of the policies as much as anybody else, but they are what they are in the past.
But I want them to have the radios, so.
Yeah, the, the last piece of this is, this is not a budget item.
Right.
Okay, so, people need to understand that it's not money that's just hanging around here to go pick off. Is there, is there gonna be a motion tonight, or are we just not, not gonna take any action on it? Because it's eight thirty.
I would be fine with going ahead with it regardless of what the policy says. I feel bad when we call up these people knowing that we're gonna go a certain way. Somebody at a company is wasting time, our highway foreman's wasting time, and our guys, one of our main guys here saying we need it.
Then you're gonna have to take two motions at a time, you're gonna have to make a motion to waive the policy, purchasing policy.
Make a motion to waive the purchasing policy for this purpose.
For the radios.
For the radios.
Purchase for highway, is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for a lack of a second. Is there a motion to table this until the next, uh, let's say thirty days? That that'll give people time, or however you wanna do it, if you wanna do it in two weeks, that's fine with me too. Is there a motion to do that? Yeah, I'll table it. Motion to table?
Yeah, I, just, let's keep it on for the next two weeks, let's, let's keep it on for two weeks, see what we get.
For information?
Yep, we, we need, we need, let's.
Is there a second to table it for two weeks? Well, I say that, but April fifth, when is our next meeting, Brandon? The?
Uh, April nineteen.
Nineteen? The April, let's make it specific to nineteen.
Yeah, April nineteenth.
Is there, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Motion been made, seconded to table the highway per, uh, radio purchase issued till April nineteenth. Any discussion? Yeah, and, and, I mean, in the meantime, I mean, I want you to work with Brandon, and then go find three people, or whatever, how it fits the policy, and then, then they'll be satisfied.
Thank you both for your time.
No, thank you.
We'll, we'll get to the. Hold it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
May.
Okay. Thank you.
See ya.
Good night.
Night.
Um, let's go to the audit. Do we have a, uh, is there a, is there gonna be action on this audit, um?
Can we do the fire department contract real quick?
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Did you? We all gotta sign?
But, but the, but the two, but the two have signed, right, two chiefs have signed?
Yeah, I was letting him hang around, because the, the board still has to approve the contract.
Okay.
So I just wanted to go over the changes that were made to the contract really quick. Um, and then if the board can, can approve the contract, and then everybody can sign.
They were what was in the packet, right? Nothing's changed since that, right?
Nope. Nothing's changed since then.
So is this something new? This is something that's never been done before?
Um, no, we sign contracts sometimes, like, one, I think one time was like a five-year contract, maybe one was a two-year contract, and they, sometimes they, they're, they're, they're automatically renewed, and then sometimes not, so one side can say that, uh, there's like a six-month lead time to not do it, but most of the time, changes may or may not be made. I, I will say that this time, um, I know that I've commented a lot to Brandon, and I, and I've commented to others, that in the past, it seemed like we used to get bogged down with lawyers, either for the town, or the departments would hire lawyers. And I just made it pretty clear right off the get-go that I didn't want anything to do with lawyers. Um, and the simpler, the better. Now, the, in this contract, the, the, and I'm sure that, I don't know if Brandon wants to read them or not, but in a nutshell, it moves the financial, uh, the bookkeeping to the town, that's, that's never happened before.
Um, for both departments.
Yeah.
It was happening for one already.
Um, but it also, it, it, and it outlines, uh, some of the things, like the purchases will be made, you know, by the town, or, or in whole, I hope, because what I've learned over the last few years is that they do so much that they feel the need to fundraise all the time, to make up the gap. I don't wanna hear that, what I wanna hear is a straightforward need, and let the, let us up here back up that need, and, and for the voters, to say. Now, you know, as a, as a general rule, fire has changed a great deal, I mean, ninety percent or ninety-five percent of their calls are ambulance related. So, so the whole thing has evolved, so, did you wanna say anything about the, what, the, the highlights, or?
Well, I read it, I just didn't, I didn't know if it was something that was from before, if it's new, or, I mean, this is new to me.
Yeah, yeah, no, it just, I, I'm not even, I'm not even sure technically, Brandon keeps saying that we need one, I, I don't know that we do, I mean, they do a lot of hard work, and every time the bell rings, they, they show up. I mean, it just, uh.
Thank you.
It, it's, it's a matter of, uh, if you've ever had a scanner and you listen, it's, it's fascinating.
Yeah.
They just.
I grew up with one.
Appear, yes. So do, do we need a motion, why don't we just make a board motion right now to, to approve the, uh, fire contract with both departments? Um, for, is, so how long is the term?
It's, it's dated for April fifth, so that's the most, that's the final contract. Um, the term is for three years.
Okay, so, so twenty twenty, so when does it start, July first? Or, starts today?
It's effective today.
Okay.
Um, and then it ends June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, I believe, let me just confirm that. Nope, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three, that's not three years.
So it's not three years, then?
Um, two years.
Okay, I'd like to see a motion to approve the fire contracts for, for, uh, for the town, uh, effective April fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and end on six, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made, seconded to approve the fire contracts, uh, so noted. Any discussion? Paul?
I just wanna give Brandon a second to scan before, for that final date.
Okay, it's fine.
Okay.
You're in, you're okay?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Can we sign those, and then?
No, you have to sign it.
It's a chair.
Oh, we don't, no, good.
Just, but, but do you wanna sign so you guys can go home, or you can sign now and go home?
No, I want you all to sign, and then I'll sign.
To sign.
Yeah.
Floane has to do the last one to sign.
Come up and sign. They're trying to jumpstart us.
I didn't bring my glasses.
Waiting for balloons to go up in the.
Been a long time coming.
Well, I.
You have the balloons?
Yeah. I didn't bring my glasses.
We have a timeline all the way up until June thirtieth, of things that we need to do to kick it off July first.
Okay.
So that's why I'm pretty.
Thank you.
I'll send you guys a copy, um, the email.
I was gonna sign in Holby's place. Okay.
Okey doke.
Uh, thank you, Floane, for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Is there a, uh, decision that's gonna come up tonight for the audit, Brandon, or, I know you put out an art, go ahead, Paul.
Um, we need a motion to extend the meeting.
But it's eight thirty.
What time's the meeting supposed to end, it started at six thirty?
I don't know, nine. We never extend any, when we go past nine, we've been going to nine.
Well, we also started meetings at seven, I was just curious, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, but we haven't started a meeting at seven for like, months.
Okay.
So, um, do you have, do you have the RFP for a decision tonight for the auditors, or no?
Yes.
An action?
Yeah, we, we do need action tonight for the auditors, um, so we've advertised the RFP, let me pull it up here.
Get three quotes.
Uh, we ended up getting, you don't need to read quotes when you put something out to bid, because you can't force people to bid.
That's true.
So I, I.
We've had like twenty companies, because they came to me.
Yes, I, I emailed it to forty people, um, and then I copied Dave, just to, for transparency, I really want people to know that we tried.
It was just too much. I was reading it, I was like, wow.
Too bad they didn't sell radio.
They're still coming through.
I had to hang by the end of Saturday night.
But, so we, our contract with Sullivan Powers expired last year, um, and their final audit for the town was, was this past audit for FY twenty. We advertised the bids on March first, and bids were due no later than four thirty PM on March twenty-sixth. We held our public bid opening via Zoom in the town clerk's office at ten AM on Thursday, April first, which is April Fool's Day. And two companies submitted bids. The first is RHR Smith and Company, the treasurer worked with RHR Smith and Company in, in Springfield, and then Mudgeet, Jeanette, and Crowe, Weisner. And they were actually our auditors prior to Sullivan Powers. Um, so they've, they're already familiar with the town, um.
Uh, okay, I have a question. So obviously, the first one was low bid by eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
And when you bid on these things, money's money to me. So, um, and, you know, I read enough of the, that they do a bunch of town work, so this is nothing strange to them. Um, my question is this, um, is there a town opt out after a year or two, or is it this completely bound to a five-year agreement? Are there any words in here that either the company can dump us, or that we can dump the company after a year or two? Uh, either one of them, either one of the responders?
Let me take a peek at that, just to confirm.
Is this what the average going rate is, what, what have we paid in the past?
It's actually about three thousand dollars cheaper than what we've paid, yeah.
Yeah.
And to consider like, the, the, the money that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars really is not a lot of money, for, for the one year to go through two and a half million dollars, or, or more, whatever it's gonna be to, between the highway and the general fund.
All right, so, we would still create the contract for, for other of them to sign, so we can add something like that in there.
Okay.
Um, but per the RFP, it was for a five-year bid.
Okay.
Um, but we can still.
So I don't think you can change, I don't know if you wanna change the rules, but I just wanted to ask if that was in there, because sometimes, but, but I don't know, Steve Hyer said that he's worked with that, I saw the list of the, both of them frankly do a lot of towns in Vermont.
Yes.
So, I don't know. I, I don't know that we're gonna find an auditor that's gonna agree with what we do anyway, because their job is to find something that we don't do right, so that they can write that down and justify themselves. And we just hope that it's something minor, so that we can correct it, and then they can move on to the next problem. That's exactly what's gonna happen here. Um, but we don't want anything earth-shattering either, we don't want some, some kind of financial decision, or that they find that somebody didn't do their job, and it's something that, that it could create quite a mess for us. And, and by that, I mean a deficit, because if that happens, then there, by law, there's, uh, there's some real rules about how towns handle deficits. And one of the things you do is you have like emergency town meetings, and then you have a, a different tax rate set, and it's like ketchup in a hurry. What does the board wanna do with this? I, I would like, I have a motion to, for action to, uh, this has gone out to a bid, you saw the number of companies, there were something like forty all over the country, I think, too, and two of them responded. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
We gotta pick one though, right?
Yep, you gotta pick a company. Normally, in this circumstance, unless you can show significant reason not to, it's the low bidder.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Make a motion to accept the RFP from RHR Smith and Company CPAs for our audit.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion been made, seconded to award the auditing bid for the town to RHR Smith and Company, uh, for the years two thousand twenty-one, two, three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars each year. How's that? Is that agreeable to the motion? Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, I understand that you guys are looking at the lowest bid, but you're getting more hours at a less hourly rate.
Yeah, the six hundred one.
Yeah, I noticed that is.
If you go with RHR, you're only getting four hundred and sixty-five hours at a hundred and seven fifty-two per hour. If you go with the second company, you're getting six hundred hours at ninety-six sixty-six per hour. So you're getting more hours at a less rate.
Does everybody get that?
Yeah.
Chauncey's doing the math.
He's the budget committee helping us out.
But here's a, but here's a, but here's a, here's another twist to it. Maybe it'll only take Smith, even though he's a little more pricey per hour, it's only gonna take him those amount of hours to do what he thinks is gonna work, right?
Maybe he won't.
Maybe he won't, it, but it's incorporated in the, but it's incorporated in the, at a price not to exceed, if we're, if we're limiting it to ten thousand dollars on the motion.
But then what if it's not done?
I don't know. See what I?
Usually when you bid a job, you're on the bid.
It's for the whole job, correct.
You're, you're on, I think you're on the hook, because I, you know, he, he did bid that amount, and, and.
But when you look at, when you're saying the lesser amount, I understand you're looking at the overall amount, but if you look at the hourly rate.
Yep.
Do you wanna give them more time?
I don't know.
Well, we could go up to eight thousand dollars worth of more time and still break even.
Yes, for five years. So it's another, so it's another twelve hundred dollars a year, or a little bit more than that.
Yeah, maybe you need it one year, maybe you don't.
Fourteen to fifteen hundred dollars a year, more, yes, you're right. More like fifteen hundred dollars, seventy-five hundred in five-year term. Motion's been made, seconded to award the bid to RHR Smith auditing for the noted years, at a price not to exceed ten thousand dollars a year. Total cost at fifty thousand dollars for five years. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We don't need to discuss the, uh, yeah, you see the noted, uh, April 19th, um, noted things for the, uh, agenda. I'm sure that, that, that's always moving. Those are moving parts. Let's go to appointments. Uh, we have a Martin Memorial Hall, Memorial Hall Board of Trustee Janet Bristol and Parks and Recreation Commission Ashley Esti. Um, why don't we take those both up? Somebody can make a motion for those appointments, please.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we appoint Janet Bristol to the one-year term vacancy of the Martin Memorial Hall Board of Trustees. You want both of them at one?
Yeah, both of them at the same time.
And, and also, um, Ashley Esti to the one-year vacancy term for Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to, uh, name Janet Bristol and Ashley Esti to the noted committees' appointments. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go to warrants. Somebody's going to make a motion for the
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the warrant. For meaning of April 5th, 2021, uh, general fund payroll of, uh, $20,910.50. Operating expense, $68,677.11. Highway fund payroll, $17,438.20. Uh, operating expense, $73,802.12. Solid Waste Management Fund, uh, payroll is $2,275.45. And operating expenses, $13,844.95. Library payroll, uh, totaling $2,918.29. Um, and operating expense. For grand total of payroll is $43,542.44. And, uh, grand total operating, whoop, operating expense of, uh,
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the warrant dated April 5th, 2021 for the noted amounts. Is there any discussion? Nothing. I don't hear anything.
No, nothing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And I'd like an executive session for five or 10 minutes here to take up, uh, the 2014 purchase and sales agreement that we have.
Do we want to add something to next agenda though that was forgotten from last time?
Okay.
We never went over, uh, a review for, uh, Brandon.
Yep. We can do that.
Performance evaluation.
Yep.
Didn't want to forget you.
Thank you.
That sounded kind of forcefully.
Yeah.
That was like, I'm going to take a bite out of crime.
Can we invite, um, Olivia into the executive sessions?
Yeah.
Just for the sake, uh, she closes up the office and
I, I would, uh, in, 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 in town, uh, town manager Brandon Gollnix report, he went over quite a detail about, I just want to add this to the board before we go in there. To a lot of detail with the solid waste, uh, the agreement between the three towns. If you have any comment or any feelings, I want you to, you know, talk with him about that. Because it, it's, it's very important that we keep going forward on that. Um, because we want to make some, uh, decisions by, uh, June, when we set the tax rate. About these fees and everything. So it's kind of critical that, that we keep everybody on the same page. Because it, it had a shot where it was not going to and then it kind of came back around. So I want to keep us all focused on trying to keep that three-town arrangement together. Need a motion for executive session for contract.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.